Okay, I would like to call the June 26, 2017 Board of Education Special Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Costello?
Here.
Ms. Onu-Allis?
Here.
Ms. Kerr?
Here.
Ms. Nolan?
Here.
Ms. Owens?
Here.
Uh, Mrs. Ward?
Here.
Madam President?
Here. Everyone could stand for the Pledge of Legions, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, in due respect, religious stance, wine made cheap, under God, indivisible, with liberties and justice.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is comments from the audience.
Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting. We are now at the public comment period of the meeting when the board listens to issues and concerns but does not respond to statements. As stated in our Board Welcome Flyer, we ask that you complete a request to speak card. Each speaker will be allotted up to three minutes. A tone will sound when your time is up. If you wish to have a written reply to your concern or question, please check the box on the card and write me five will email to you.
Muy buenas noches y bienvenidos a la reunión de la junta educativa del 46. Nos encontramos durante la reunión, perdón, durante la porción de la reunión donde la junta le da la bienvenida a algún comentario del público. Durante ese tiempo, la junta escuchará su comentario pero no contestará su pregunta o proverá comentario. Como indicado en el proyecto de bienvenida, le pedimos que complete la tarjeta. Cada persona tendrá tres minutos para elegirse entre la junta y si escuchan los señores deberán construir su comentario lo más pronto posible. Si desean una respuesta a su pregunta, por favor, marque la caja que se encuentra en la tarjeta y se la enviará por escrito externa su respuesta. Gracias.
Okay, our first speaker is Megan Larson.
Thank you. Your role tonight as a board is to vote on the Emsa proposal. After working on a proposal for over three years, the Emsa team should be able to accurately and completely articulate the details of their plan and have all of the answers at their fingertips, ready for every scenario. That's what I would expect from a team proposing to open a new business whose clients are our children. Why is it then that they sent revised materials last night, the night before the vote, to correct errors that concerned parents brought up as recently as last week? Can you seriously sit there and in good conscience vote for a team that forgot to budget for food until it was pointed out to them? Let that sink in for a minute. They forgot to budget for food. That's $100,000 error. Last night's revised budget still only allows for 5% increases for healthcare costs in a state that saw double-digit increases in employer contributions the last two years alone. That's a significant unfunded liability that they have no remedy for. As a parent, I shouldn't have to be pointing out error after error. They're the ones making the proposal. It's their job to know this. They don't even have a revised estimate for building repairs. They're relying on inspections from 2011 for their numbers. To be fair, they did receive asbestos results for the dining hall in 2016, but a lot can happen in six years. I find it hard to believe that the condition of the property improved since then. I'm not even pointing out the sneaky errors, errors resulting from our state's complicated funding process, the ones that would be hard to find for seasoned professionals, let alone a team that has zero experience opening or operating a school. I'm talking about huge glaring errors that any reasonably capable person should be able to spot, like budgeting for food. Some board members expressed a concern that denying this proposal would create a chilling effect on any future charter proposals. I contend that approving this ridiculous, flawed, failing proposal would be the true inhibitor of future charters. Diverting critical funding resources to pay for this spectacular failure will make funds even scarcer or an actual solid proposal to come along. Once this proposal is approved, they are virtually untouchable until they inevitably run out of money. How many deserving, well-thought-out charters will you have to deny due to lack of funding because you approved this mess? And what do you say to those students who are left in limbo because you closed your eyes and hoped for the best? I ask you to deny the Emsa charter and let's move on to the critical issues the district is facing, like keeping the schools open next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Keith Rauschenberger.
I'd like to thank the board members, the administration, and I'd like to thank everybody in this room for here tonight because ultimately I think we're all here for one reason. We're here for our kids. We're here for education because we think it's the most important thing that we can do for the next generation. Some of you guys know me, some of you know. Keith Rauschenberger, I'm a financial advisor, former banker, small business owner. And I've been involved in the development of Emsa for almost four years now. I was the first person to develop the first budget in August of 2013. And over that course of time, four years, this budget has been vetted and has been molded by the input from scores and scores of individuals and organizations. It has been vetted by U46 twice. INX, or the Illinois Network of Charter Schools, has vetted it and provided input. Afton Partners, a national educational consulting group specializing in finance, has vetted it and provided input and verified numbers. The State Charter School Commission has looked at it and vetted it and provided us with input. Matt Shaw, a local educational finance expert, both has looked at it twice, both as part of the commission and as consultant working for Emsa. Expeditionary Learning, an experienced charter school operator, has looked at it, vetted it, and provided us with input. And the folks present at tonight's meeting on both sides of this table have vetted this budget. So this budget is not the product of Emsa but of the collective work of numerous educational experts with years of varied experience over four years. This is probably one of the most scrutinized, discussed, and vetted budgets I have personally ever been involved in over 30 years in business and accounting. So I would suggest, based upon the rigor of this process and the durability of this budget, that this budget and this team are well-prepared to launch Emsa, and I recommend it for your affirmative approval and support. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Ann Brown.
Hello, I'm Ann Levy Brown from the Illinois Network of Charter Schools, a statewide nonprofit charter support organization. My organization works with charter schools across Illinois, and we have connected Emsa with resources and experts from the charter sector in areas including special education, English learner instruction, finance and operations, facilities, student recruitment, school leadership, and human resources. I wish to thank both the U46 board members and the administration for the significant time and effort that you have invested in reviewing the Emsa charter school proposal and in the negotiations that have led to the contract agreement that is before you tonight. We recognize the challenges inherent in considering charter proposals and in approving a charter proposal for the first time in District U46. This is new territory and with that comes many questions and a degree of uncertainty. Based on our experience with charter schools across the state, INX has great confidence in the Emsa team and in their future success as a charter school serving students in U46. Theirs is a solid plan, on par with highly successful charters. It has only been enhanced by the thoughtful questions board members and administrators have asked. Since April 10th, when six board members voted to approve the Emsa proposal pending successful contract negotiations, each party has made concessions and compromises in order to arrive in an agreement that is mutually beneficial. The contract has been carefully negotiated and vetted. The board has had opportunity to raise questions throughout the negotiation process, many of which have helped to strengthen the final agreement. Tonight, I ask you to execute this agreement and allow this small school, which will serve 1% of the students in the state's second-largest district, to move forward with its plans for an innovative, exciting option for U46 students and the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Veronica Betts.
Good evening. My name is Veronica Betts. I'm a parent and a longtime U46 taxpayer and a voter. And I've been up here a couple of times now to talk to you about my opinion on this Emsa charter. And it just so happens that recently I found out that there was another charter for another school down in East Aurora District, that they also had a charter proposal before them that was turned down, and the charter group, Greater Good Education, sent up for appeal to the state. And that organization decided that, based on the current political and financial climate in Illinois, to withdraw their proposal for the good of the students of that district. And it's all that any of us who have been up here speaking about is what is the good for all the students of our district? And for me, I just don't see it as being an Emsa. And I'm asking you to please deny this charter proposal and to get on with determining how we're going to weather the financial storm that Springfield has put us in. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Denise Momadou. Denise?
Momadou? Momadou. M-O-M-A-D-U. Okay. Thank you. (inaudible)
My name is Denise Momadou, and as you can see, I'm a working mom with my four and a half and my eighteen and a half month old year. I'm a firm believer that education starts at home. I'm also even a firmer believer that freedom of choice and ability to have options. So don't let the neighbor with school down the street from my house be the only option for my daughter next year. Allow me as a parent to choose what is best for my family, what is the best fit for my daughter. Please approve the contract for the Elgin Math and Science Academy Charter School. I thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carol Rauschenberger.
I'm a citizen of Elgin. I'm on the Elgin City Council. I'm an employee of U46. I am a mother to three students that graduated from U46 and also taxpayer. I just wanted to give an update on the proposed lease. The city of Elgin preliminarily approved a proposed lease with the Elgin Charter School Initiative on March 8th for the Fox River Country Day School property. The proposed lease agreement is being placed on our city council agenda on June 28th for council approval. It passed on March 8th, eight to one. There is a full expectation that the proposed lease will be passed as it was previously. I spoke with our newest council member today, Cory Dixon, and he is in full support of the lease as well as the charter school. So I just wanted to give you that update.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dennis Vergas. V-E-R-G. Is it G?
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the new council members, or board members, I should say. Thank you again for having me. As you noticed, my daughter's not here with me today. For every eight meetings she attends, she gets one off. Today, she chose to use her one off to destroy my house and my backyard instead. So I just want to talk to you guys today about some of the outreach items that I've been engaged in since the last time we met. That's been my specific goal. It's been a lot of interpersonal relationships that I've leveraged a little bit to go ahead and speak one-on-one with a lot of parents of younger children that live in my neighborhood. For me, I live in on the southeast side, where it's about 60 to 65% Hispanic, most of which is Mexican, and I speak on a daily basis with most of my neighbors. They're very interested in the Emsa proposal. They just want a little more guidance from, you know, the other parents in the neighborhood and people like myself to talk one-on-one with them, to really figure out, is this a good idea for them, their children, and their, you know, their children's children as we go down the line? So I've done a lot of that specifically. Also, we will be working closely with the Elgin Hispanic Network. Had a very, very nice meeting, and we'll be working closely with the Housing Authority of Elgin and the aforementioned Cory Dixon is a good friend of mine. So we've been working a lot, really on getting not just the overall, you know, macro level word out, but at the micro level from the interpersonal side, how can I talk to somebody specifically about what's going on, what the school would mean to them? And really, you know, again, as I mentioned before, there is something selfish about this. It's something that would keep me very happy in being in Elgin is my daughter going to the school, right? So she's four. If she doesn't get into the school, she'll be at Elgin Academy if my wife doesn't kick us out of Elgin. But that said, I want this to be available for somebody like my daughter, who is, you know, a crazy little girl that runs around, that learns more by doing than by being told how to do. As I mentioned before, as well, I didn't learn at all when being told how to learn. I really didn't even go to school when I was being told how to learn. Not saying that if I would have been given this opportunity, it would have been, you know, that immediate light bulb, but there is also the possibility that it could have been. So again, for my active participation in this process, I will continue to talk one-on-one with a lot of parents, a lot of future parents, about what the Emsa proposal is, what the school will be, and then hopefully with your approval tonight, what it will become in the very near future. So thank you all again, and I look forward to speaking to you more about it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dori Height.
I'm part of the Emsa board, and I've learned a whole lot over the last few months working with you guys in this contract negotiation process. But one thing that sticks out is that we've all been here before and we're all okay. If I can take you through a little timeline, April 22nd, 2015, Elgin District U46 Enrollment and Facilities Committee are reviewing attendance boundary changes that would affect at least 13 elementary schools. The school closing issue has been complicated, has been complicated by CEO Tony Sanders' recent announcement that the administration may want to start a magnet school in a closed elementary school building. April 24th, 2015, Elgin School District has a new long-term strategic plan to get over the next five years, under the guidance of a paid consulting service in the U46 board district. Sanders has also given hint to some of those practical initiatives. During the board's April 6th meeting, he revealed that the administrators were thinking of turning some underused elementary school buildings into a magnet school, perhaps somewhat similar to the Math Science Academy that the Elgin Charter School Initiative tried to get off the ground last year. He said as he sees it as an expression of the strategic plan's priority. May 12th, Elgin Area School District U46 officials once again will be considering boundary changes and perhaps even school closing as student enrollment declines in some elementary schools. November 3rd, 2015, enrollments are dropping in bid of the school districts in U46, especially youngest grades. The district administrators and Citizens Advisory Council are expected to look this year at possibility of closing an underused elementary school and converting it into a magnet charter school. July 29th, 2016, Elgin Area District U46 has been using mobile classrooms to address space needs for over 20 years. This just goes on and on, but we're still here. I get the notion of trying new things makes a lot of people uncomfortable, and I get that. Everyone is worried, what if this fails? Nobody wants to have a school that doesn't work. But the fact is, the majority of the children in this country are already attending schools that don't work. We need to take risks to make change, not just small changes but dramatic changes. We need to keep innovating. Even though a lot of our schools are very, very good, new things need to be tried, and this will be a continuous process and a partnership that's evaluation and feedback and follow-up. There are so many ideas that haven't been tried yet, and we... There are so many ideas that haven't been tried yet, and we, as the district and the schools, are the only ones that can make that happen. Students are complicated people. Students are whole people. And sometimes when we talk about education and we talk about classrooms, we talk about learning, we forget that. The goal for all our schools should be to be able to create a culture that motivates students to want to do their best, support their classmates, and give back to their community. This is the core of Emsa. This is what we will teach and what we will do. Ask that you approve it.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Carrie Kelly.
Hello. Thank you, board members, for working through this new and unfamiliar process and also for your helpful feedback, which we have done our best to address and in good faith incorporated into our plans. Thank you, administration. Dr. Sederwhite, Brian Lindholm, and Del Burnage for your professionalism, expertise, and guidance. Thank you, Miguel Rodriguez and Luis Rodriguez, for steering the contract negotiations. Thank you, design team. These last 75 days have been grueling. U-46 leaders have assured us that they will continue to work and collaborate with Emsa as we move forward. Both Emsa and the district have the best interests of all students at heart. We want to help close the achievement gaps that persist at our Elgin Elementary Schools, and we understand that finding solutions is also a district priority. Our expeditionary learning model has documented success in closing such achievement gaps. We understand that additional concerns have been raised by the administration, and we would welcome the opportunity to address these. When Emsa is operational, if the district doesn't get paid state or federal money, we won't expect funding from the district. The current budget impasse is frustrating to us all, but we wouldn't receive funding until July of 2018. Hopefully, we won't be in the same boat. Throughout our budget process, we have consulted with Matthew Shaw, a charter school financial expert who also sat on the Charter Commission Review Board. We've had the benefit of the Board's close examination as well. We'd like to dispel the notion that 92% PCTC puts us in a precarious position. Of course, we'd prefer 100% PCTC like our neighbor receives, but our budget can withstand significant adjustments, easily a half a million. Our expenses per student is in line with other charter schools that we've researched. We do have, in effect, over a million reserves by year six. On April 10th, the school board approved Emsa's proposal in a six-to-one vote. A condition to the approval was the requirement that the administration reach a charter agreement with Emsa. We negotiated in good faith with the administrative team, and we made multiple adjustments and concessions. We have responded to all additional requests for information promptly. On Wednesday, June 21st, we reached such an agreement. Emsa truly wants to be an asset to U-46. With the talk of closing Elgin Elementary Schools because buildings are not conducive to learning, can we be a part of the solution? Our campus can be a learning lab for all U-46 students. Our expeditionary learning model and our accelerated math program can be studied and adopted in U-46 schools. We will bring a new excitement and interest to U-46 by educating students in a unique setting and way. Together, we can make a difference in the lives of thousands of children. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is discussion action. Item A, could I have a motion to approve lodging expenses associated with attending the Illinois Association of School Boards 2017 Joint Conference, November 17th through the 19th, 2017, for board members Donna Smith, Sue Kerr, Tracy O'Neil Ellis, Melissa Owens, as well as Chief Executive Officer Tony Sanders, in a total amount not to exceed $2,110. So moved. Sue.
Second.
Any discussion?
I will be voting for this motion, but in light of my opposition to IASB, I just wanted to let you all know that I think that, well, first of all, I do support and respect what the Board has done. That's what our goal is, is to say we act as a board. I won't be going to this meeting. I hope that the board members that will be attending do get the benchmarking and networking opportunities that has been identified by many of you, so I will be voting in favor of it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I am in agreement with Phil, and I also will be voting yes, although I have also voiced my past disagreement with sending funds to IASB.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Veronica?
Sorry. I attend the triple I conference. I find a middle ground in that I choose not to stay overnight and choose to simply attend the educational sessions and forego the networking of the evening. That's a personal choice that I make, and it's why, you know, obviously, I will support this because I believe that each board member can make that individual decision, and I support the value of IASB and the continuing education, not just for board members, but for top-level staff as well. It's an extremely valuable conference.
Well, and I'd just like to add, there are sessions, not only on Saturday, that's when the main day is, but there also are sessions on Friday and on Sunday morning, and there's a general session on Sunday.
Sue.
And I was going to note, I looked at the schedule, and it looks like they've taken all the panel discussions out of Sunday, so it's just the general, so I may not even...
We're going to have to look at that. You and I discussed that this afternoon, and we're going to have to look at that. But it says not to exceed, so as long as we stay under, we're fine. Any other comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Gert?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approve seven to zero.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Elgin Charter School Initiative. Could I have a motion to approve the resolution regarding the Elgin Math and Science Academy Charter School Initiative proposal at District U-46 granting approval of the charter school proposal and the mutually agreed-upon contract herein attached as Exhibit A? Do we need to... Do we need a summary of it? It's already posted, so we're good. Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Phil?
Second.
Melissa? Any discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
So the Board approved the resolution proposal that was provided by Emsa on April 10th, so I'm unsure whether this motion is appropriate, given that we have already approved their proposal, six to one, on April 10th. So shouldn't we only be voting on the contract? I'd like to have a discussion about that.
Okay.
May I offer you a legal...
Go ahead.
Based on my legal opinion, as well as the legal opinion of outside legal counsel, Mr. Vazquez, the approval was contingent or subject to the negotiations and eventually the approval of the contract. So I think you have to approve the motion the way President Smith read it.
Right, it was contingent on the contract, but we already approved the proposal. So shouldn't we only be voting on the contract now?
No, it should be both.
Well, it seems like that we're at an impasse then. Is that what this motion is doing, is that we're at an impasse with the contract? I would think that would be the point we're at, if we're saying that we're back to the proposal.
Well, you're back to both. I mean, it was, when the Board approved the proposal, it was subject to unagreed-upon final contract, so that's why my legal opinion is you have to approve. You have to consider the motion the way it reads.
But you just said a few minutes ago that we approved the proposal contingent upon the approval of the contract, so we had to approve the contract. That's what you had said. So today, we have to approve either approve or deny the contract, but you've written the resolution to approve or deny the proposal, which we already voted on.
Well, I don't know what else I can say, but I stand by my legal opinion and the legal opinion of our outside legal counsel.
This... Let me ask this. I'm looking at this, and I did not compare it word for word, but this is not the same resolution we approved before. This is a new resolution.
Well, this is the resolution. It also includes, incorporates the approval of the contract.
Right, but it is not the same resolution, the same wording...
Correct.
...that we approved before. This is actually approving a resolution to approve the contract. Am I correct?
Yes.
Like we do with... I'm trying to think of another instance. We do this with budgets. We approve a resolution to approve the budget. There's other things that we do. We approve a resolution which approves the item.
So what happened to what we approved on April, whatever the date was in April? What happened to that resolution?
It's before you contingent upon the approval of the, subject to the approval of the contract.
No, that's not what she just said. She said that this is a different proposal, different resolution.
No, no, it's not worded the same. It's actually saying, where is the part that I noticed?
Okay, I'm just going to say, I'm going to get to the point of how I feel about this. I feel like this was a bait and switch. I don't know how this happened over the course of a matter of days, but somehow, what we were led to believe at the last meeting where we were going to be presented with an agreed-upon contract that both sides worked diligently to achieve, somehow, we were supposed to be voting on that, but on Friday, when the board docs became available, it's suddenly now a different resolution with the agreement. And opening it up again to us, to rehashing what has already been hashed, and basically, in my opinion, negating all those efforts, and it makes us seem disingenuous in our efforts with Emsa, that all along, we haven't worked in good faith if this is what we pull out in the end, is a revisit of the vote of even approving the charter. The vote in April was to conditionally approve the charter with the notion that we would be working together toward a contract, and tonight, we're not being presented just a contract to vote up or down. We're being presented with a new proposal on approving the charter school.
So the way I read this is that the resolution was a contingent resolution, a conditional resolution, and it has no meaning unless we've reached a mutually agreed-upon contract. We don't know if we've reached a mutually agreed-upon contract until this board takes a vote.
On the contract.
But until that happens, then the resolution is meaningless.
So let's vote on the contract.
I think that you have to vote on the proposal because it's contingent. Otherwise, you haven't approved the proposal, because it was contingent upon a mutually agreed-upon contract. The two go together. If you don't have one, you don't have the other.
So why are we voting then? If it was contingent on a mutually agreed-upon contract, and the two sides came to a mutual agreement after many weeks...
I don't know how you can say the two sides came to a mutual agreement. Where's that? It doesn't, we don't determine whether or not...
So the document that's been presented to us was not...
Can I finish? We don't determine whether or not it's a mutual agreement until we vote tonight. Only then, because the administration doesn't have the authority to determine whether or not this is mutually agreeable to the Board. Only the Board can determine whether or not this contract is mutually agreeing.
So why did we make them our designees to negotiate with this contract?
What do you mean? They negotiate all of our contracts. We have six unions. They negotiate all of those, too. And then they come back based on what we decide and bring us a contract, and we determine. It isn't, none of those union contracts are valid until this Board decides and votes. So administration goes, according to our directions, into negotiations with our labor unions and comes back with whatever, whenever they run out of time or gone as far as they can go. And they bring that back to us, and we do not have a mutually agreed-upon contract with any labor union until this Board votes. That's exactly what's happening here. Until this Board votes, we don't have a mutually agreed-upon contract. Only the seven of us acting as a Board can determine whether or not this agreement is mutually agreeable.
So when we, let's, using your example, do we vote again on whether or not to even have an agreement with the union?
I don't recall the specifics of the motion, so I can't say sitting here right now.
I'm trying to point out that I don't think we revisit the question of whether or not to work together to get to a contract point, and that's what's happening tonight.
I don't think we're revisiting...
It's basically negating our vote from April.
Well, I, okay, I disagree, but...
And what effect did our vote on April 10th have, then?
It had the effect, in my opinion, it had the effect of sending, giving administration authorization to go negotiate. That's what effect it had, but, and that's what they did. But until they come back, until we are at the point we're at now, where we're about to vote on a contract, there is no mutually agreed-upon contract. How do you know there is one? We haven't voted. Only we have the authority to say whether or not we accept this contract or not.
Oh, I agree, we need to vote on a contract. I don't agree we need to revote on a proposal, which we already passed on April 10th, six to one.
Well, we can agree to disagree.
So who made the decision on whether or not we should have a resolution, vote on the resolution tonight? How did that decision get made?
This is legal, right?
Correct, correct. This is the way legal, the legal process we have to follow.
What would happen if we just voted on the contract without the resolution?
You know, I'm not sure, but this is the way the legal process is supposed to work, because the resolution is contingent upon the successful, you know, the Board voting and, you know, approving the contract, so...
So in, I don't want to muck up the process further, even though it seems to already be there. I do want to point out some things about why, I want to point out some, I want to make some points about why I feel that we should move forward in working with Emsa and approving, whatever we end up approving or denying tonight, whether it's the contract or the contract and this new resolution, I'm not thrilled about, but I want to move forward to the next point, which is, you know, this, to me, has been an appropriate process that we've gone through. And Emsa is a grassroots group that has been working for four or five years, I don't even know, I remember how many years, to bring something to our community that we don't have right now, that our district isn't putting forth, in my opinion, and that I have always seen them as a genuine group that wants to create something new and innovative. I compare it to how Dual Language started in our district. Dual Language is a part of our district now. It's an incredible program. It didn't start by us deciding we're going to have this incredible program and bring it district-wide. No, it started in one small school with champions at that school that had a vision, that wanted to do something different, and had to sell it, and they had to get buy-in in their community, and then they had to get, you know, funding for it and to do something which was a departure from anything else in our district. And it succeeded. Channing, you know, started out as one school, two classes, they moved on, and now we have created, taken that wonderful model, made it district-wide, and we're recognized across the country for this model. I look at Emsa as possibly being another germinating influence in our district. Yes, it's a charter school. Yes, Channing was not a charter school. But I also look at our district as a huge bureaucracy that is difficult to be innovative in our district. We have a one-size-fits-all. It's hard to get a departure through, pass through the teachers' union contract, and I look at this as a possibility, especially since it was so homegrown, and it's not an outside company trying to leach money off of our students. It is a group of individuals wanting to be innovative and to provide something that some, that we aren't doing. I say, the reason I feel so strongly about this choice option at elementary is because I have lived through that choice of having to pull my child because there was no option that was acceptable in my mind for my child. My child was not being taught and was falling behind, and I was being told, no, I'm sorry, you're going to have to... And I was being told, no, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to put your child in that classroom next year with that teacher who does have, who does not have good scores and a school that does not have good scores. And I know that I was able to pull my child because I have the means. It's not easy, but I have the means. And every single day that I drive, that I take one child to the public school, one child to the private school, I realize how lucky I am, that my child's future has been greatly affected by the choice that I could make. I would love for our district to just offer one other small choice at the elementary level. At the moment, if you don't make it into gifted, you have no other option. It's your homeschool or nothing. Unless your parents can pay for you to go somewhere else, you're at that homeschool or you, you're at that neighborhood school or you homeschool your child if your parents are able to do that. That to me, doesn't seem like a good choice. We have great programs at the, at the high school level with some options. I would probably not support a charter school coming in here for the high school level because I think we offer some variety for parents and have some options. But we don't offer that at the elementary level. And I would love to get to that point in the future. If this program goes well and we can emulate it as magnet schools or something else, let's do it. This is not about me giving away money. This is about providing an opportunity for our students to grow, especially those that may not have that opportunity otherwise. So I really urge my colleagues to vote yes on this proposal.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
So I've been supportive of Emsa from the beginning. I support school choice as a matter of course. Anything that gives parents more choice in where to send their student. I don't think that student should be trapped in the school by their zip code. And if we really want to give kids a hand up out of poverty, this is the way to do it.
Okay, thank you.
I have really spent the last few months looking at this carefully. I, I came in with an open mind. As I've said in the past, I like expeditionary learning. And since I did homeschool for 12 years, I am not opposed to innovations in education. But I have many concerns and in this economic environment, I think this is not a good proposal for U46. Illinois School Code 27A-7, lowercase a9 specifically says that any charter school proposal shall include, quote, "evidence that the terms of the charter as proposed are economically sound for both the charter school and the school district." I don't believe this proposal is sound for either U46 or Emsa. For U46, the loss of $2 or $3 or $4 million a year will have an impact, particularly at a time when the state is in a serious budget crisis. I've heard a lot of talk about how money follows a child, but I have not seen evidence of how this would happen. For example, if 10 children in four different grades leave a U46 school to attend Emsa, that's $90,000 to $100,000 leaving that school. Do we reduce the school's budget by that amount? Do we release a teacher? Eliminate a bus route? And what will that do to the hundreds of kids left in that school? Emsa noted in its original proposal that the money they were requesting for the first year of operation was less than what U46 spent on buses in 2016. I would note that U46 could not afford to buy buses this year because of the state budget crisis. I also have concerns about the Emsa budget, both what it does not include and what assumptions it makes. There was talk about last, at last week's meeting about a $500,000 line of credit to be repaid after the state grants were received. I have not seen evidence that this has occurred nor is it clear whether there would be finance charges involved. An email we received last night said that Emsa should be able to receive an interest-free loan. This is the first I have heard of this and I have not seen an updated budget that reflects this. The same email indicated that the Emsa budget could draw on reserves and withstand, withstand the loss of $500,000 in Title I money. Again, I have not seen an updated budget that reflects that. I'm also curious as to why the loss of $500,000 is okay, while a week ago, a PCTC of 91% was considered a deal breaker. I also have concerns about the optimism in the budget. The budget assumes 100% enrollment every year in every grade. It assumes a PCTC of at least $9,400. If there were 10 fewer kids for each of those years, that's a loss of half a million dollars. The budget also assumes that repairs and renovations will cost $4 million. But it does not take into account things such as lead testing, which all public schools have to do now, and the remediation costs that might be involved. It also does not take into account that there may need to be installed sprinkler systems if more than half of a building is renovated. The problem is that any budget reflects certain assumptions. This budget reflects optimistic assumptions and shows a positive cash, cash balance at the end of six years. The same budget with more pessimistic assumptions might show a negative cash balance. The reality, I suspect, is somewhere in the middle. Emsa's finances will be precarious and any unexpected expenses or loss of revenue could seriously impact its ability to function. I do not believe this risk is, this risk is worth taking because I am not 100% convinced of the promised academic achievements. For example, Polaris Charter School in Chicago, which uses the EL model, scores lower on state tests than 37 out of our 40 elementary school. It has no English laner, language learners as so many of our schools have. Emsa would also use the same Eureka math curriculum that U46 uses. And U46 has also introduced a new hands-on science curriculum for next year. I am also not picking up a huge amount of public support for Emsa. The majority of emails I received in the past few weeks have been from people who have taken the time to explain why they are opposed to Emsa. For this reason, I'm, I'm opposed to this contract.
Okay, thank you. Sue?
I couldn't have said anything better than Veronica did, so I'll keep my remarks short. This proposal is just like full-day kindergarten. We took a leap of faith, saying that what would create value was a risk to grow our district by having a separate offering. We did it very quickly. We'd already redesigned the way schools were gonna be, the censuses were built in and the regions, et cetera. And we thought that by adding full-day kindergarten, it would allow us to recognize the potential of younger children having access to this. So I liken this proposal to exactly what we're doing with full-day kindergarten. And I will be supporting it enthusiastically because I think it really drives home innovation and accountability, which I haven't seen about the other 57 schools we have. I think this is a great model for what we can do in the future with an accountable and innovative resource like Emsa.
Okay, thank you.
First of all, Mr. Costello, really, for you to make that type of disparaging remark about our schools with no data. I, I've seen your blog post about turnaround plans and firing entire staffs. And now you come and publicly state you haven't seen any innovation or accountability from any 57 schools is, in my humble opinion, irresponsible unless you're bringing forth the data to back up that, that egregious comment. At any rate, on April 10th, while I voted yes to conditional approval subject to negotiation, I clearly stated at that time that I had a lot of problems with the charter proposal. And I went through those problems at length and it was clear that I would not vote, hesitate to vote no on a final proposed, um, vote if my concerns were not mitigated. So just to go through a few of them, some of which Sue more eloquently elaborated on, but the financial plan does not appear sustainable. And again, I reiterate that our school district's own public school finance experts have expressed deep concerns about it. They, and that the plan is not solid. I did not agree last week, if anybody was listening, to 92% PCTC, but asked for 91%, which Emsa clearly made, uh, clearly stated that that was not feasible. You've reduced the Title I funds, but since I haven't seen anything that would make me have a reasonable belief that Emsa can attract 60% at-risk students, I can't give credence to even that reduced amount. Your finances appear overly reliant on debt, some fundraising, debt that, loans that haven't materialized, fundraising that hasn't happened, and U46. And I cannot ignore your treasurer's comment that Emsa is hopeful that U46 will hold Emsa harmless against proration. I raised special education services on April 10th and I'm still concerned about that. Despite comments that we have a mutually agreed upon contract, I don't agree that we will fund primarily all of the risk in special ed services without providing the services. How will you serve 60% at-risk? And I've said this many times, in order to get 60% on the back end, you need a lot more than 60% at-risk families on the front end. Emsa has not countered this concern. I'm being asked to trust you and I'm gonna reiterate that I know many of you. This is not about, it's not personal. It really is not personal. I, it's not that I think that these are bad people or you're not grassroots or you're not trying to do something different. I support innovation. I take a huge exception to the thought that U46 isn't being innovative. Because on the one hand, Ms. Nolan said you're not, we're not being innovative and then talked about our award-winning nationally-recognized dual-language program. We have academies. We have lots of innovation in this district and the teachers' union does not shut down innovation. And Emsa, if I remember correctly, was going to allow unions. So if teachers' unions shut down innovation at U46, then why wouldn't they be shutting down innovation at Emsa? So your outreach plan didn't include substantive information that would have given the board and the community some assurances that you could come anywhere close to 60% at-risk students. There were no metrics or milestones to demonstrate anything. So I'm back to trust you. I looked for other objective evidence of the viability of your outreach efforts over the past four years. And in that time, in multiple opportunities to appear before or contact this board, I have not seen a coalition of parents of at-risk students coming forward clamoring for this, um, school. You haven't raised, um, I'm sorry, you haven't mitigated my concerns in that, in that regard. I could go on and on with specific budget line items, but the result is the same. Four years ago, the Charter Commission agreed with U46 that Emsa was not prepared to move forward. The contract before us is not substantially different from what was proposed four years ago. I also have to say that as a board member who's full-time employed, I'm really dismayed that Emsa did not get us any final information until last night. And I didn't even see it until this morning, but I worked all day in back-to-back meetings. So I haven't had, I opened up the document, scanned it, saw a couple of things. I've had no opportunity to sit and really pore over it, no opportunity to ask administration any questions of it. I can't, you can't do that to me the night before an important vote. I'll stop there. For all of these reasons, I'm voting no.
Go ahead.
So I just had a few questions, just from a student perspective. You know, I've been in this district for almost 12 years now and I have pride in the district and I'm proud to be part of U46. And I think that the Emsa contract, the idea behind it, I think is a good idea, but like many of you and like many people in the community, I have some questions about it. So one of them was, um, earlier today, I don't remember exactly who it was, but someone mentioned having a magnet school in the district. And what I'm wondering, and I understand, Ms. Nolan, that you said that it's hard with unions and with, you know, federal regulations and state regulations in schools. It's hard to have different ideas in schools, but I'm wondering why we can't take some of the ideas that Emsa has and put them into our own schools, especially those that are most at-risk. I know a lot of students in the high schools I've been to that come from those at-risk schools and I've heard about some of their experiences and I think that some of the ideas that Emsa had would be great opportunities for them. But I'm wondering, if we do open up a charter school here, how, first of all, how will that make U46 look? Like if it's only affecting a few kids, how will that improve the rest of the district, except for those few kids? And my other question was, why not take the money that we could use to renovate and open up a new school when we could take that money and use it in any way that we can to improve the at-risk schools that we have now? Because I think that U46 is great and could go to great places if we use what we have instead of trying to open something else to bring more people into the community.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I wanted to make another point that I didn't make before, but also respond to just a couple of things. I did not say that unions bust innovation. I did say it's not easy to get a departure at a particular school site. That's the difficulty when you want to start a program that's, that would substantially be different than the contract for our teachers allows. That's how Channing did it. So, you know, and to answer the recent question, how will this benefit our district? You could have asked the same thing when Channing started dual-language. It was 50 students a year. The same way we started the academies, it was 50 students a year when we started. And it's a great program. It doesn't affect every student, but it is an opportunity. So, I mean, I look at this as a possibility of something that could grow and that we could then model. And I've said that many times, so I just want to make sure I clarify that you have to start somewhere and starting with one school is usually how we end up doing it. But the one point that I didn't make earlier was, what happens if we vote this down? If we vote this down today, um, Emsa can go to the Charter School Commission and they can ask for 100, 100, up to 125% now the, of the, of full funding. Now, the Charter School Commission hasn't given that much, but they have given 100% in the past. And we could be looking at, at being forced to pay 100% with no collaboration. We won't have the protection for our students as the LEA in their special needs. And that greatly concerns me also because we could have this charter and not have that collaboration and not have that protection for our students. So I want to make sure we understand that if we vote this down.
Okay, thank you.
So, you know, in reviewing this, and I'm kind of in a different position because I'm walking into this after the, the first resolution was passed. But I've been mainly focusing on the budget. I have to tell you personally, getting the budget again at nine o'clock last night and having to sit down and crunch numbers because there was a statement in the memo that was attached to the budget saying that, well, you know, we'd be able to absorb Title I funding loss if that happened. And no budget, no scenario came forth with that loss. And so, you know, I had to sit there and crunch numbers, which is fine. That's, I, I signed up for this job. This is what I wanted to do. But, you know, it's a, it's a really disappointing way to have to approach this when it's constant crunch time right before we make these decisions. Again, as Ms. Kurt reiterated when she spoke, section 27A7 Charter School Submission, paragraph nine, "Ask for evidence to determine the charter school as proposed or economically sound for both the charter school and the school district." And I, I again have real concerns about both of those items. One of them that sticks out in my mind that hasn't been mentioned yet, we're being asked to fund a brand-new building, not a new building, but I mean, a new building to the district at $4 million. We are asked to do this in a climate where since 2010, the state of Illinois has not raised base funding for schools since 2010. That tells me that the state of Illinois does not want to see expansion without the natural increase in students. Nothing about that is telling us, hey, let's put money into new buildings, let's, yeah. Nothing about that says that. We are being restrained by the state at the same exact spending level as 2010. And it's quite obvious from the things that we hear from taxpayers that the, the taxpayers are tapped out on property tax. We are paying some of the highest effective tax, property tax rates in this area. Back when I was campaigning for this position and I started looking at property tax rates, my effective property tax rate in Bartlett, something around 3.26%. The effective tax rate in Oakbrook for a resident of Oakbrook, something around 1.25%. We are tapped out here and nothing, you know, that we do, or nothing that the taxpayers are asking of us, asks for are asking of us asks for that type of expansion. If this charter school proposal was going into an asset of ours, or we could make some other kind of arrangement where we are not expending taxpayer money to fund an expansion of operations and move our district from 57 schools to 58 schools with no expectation that we are going to reduce the redundancies that that will bring. We're not going to eliminate classrooms, or there's no evidence that we can eliminate classrooms, at least right off the bat. We're not going to be able to eliminate overhead in the buildings that we have. So we're going to have all of these redundancies. To me, that makes the budget, the IMSA, the IMSA contract entirely unviable as far as the district goes. Going along with that, we're also being asked to fund this school with the money that we would be sending with each student. And again, if we look at the redundancies that we have across all of our operations, it makes it quite difficult to think about how our district is going to move forward with the things that we need to do. If we look at funding $4 million for a complete redundancy in operations, that exactly equates out to the amount of money that we have to spend on buses per year. And as we just said, we have not been able to follow our capital plan this year to purchase buses. That puts us behind, and we're looking at a cycle, if we go forward with this, that we are constantly behind on the things that we need to do to make sure that we are maintaining our district. Again, I'm concerned about, on the charter school side, some of the assumptions that they have as far as Title I funding, as far as Title III funding. Those things should not be part of the operating budget. Those are additional items that would help with the instruction given to students who are low-income or who are ELL students. And to say that the charter school would be okay with losing that money and taking almost half of their operating, or their final cash position, out of their budget, and that that would be an okay and viable situation for them, and yet, for us to reduce the funding, as we talked about last week, to 91%, that was untenable. I'm not sure how those numbers align, but again, we got those numbers last night, and there's been no opportunity to ask questions on that. I've not seen evidence of what the cost would be to take out a line of credit to fund initial expenses. We talked about, or the memo talked about another interest-free loan. I haven't seen evidence about how that would impact their budget. There remains a ton of questions regarding, you know, how the final impact of this happens, and I just, it makes it very, very difficult to go forward with this.
Okay. Any other comments?
So I'd like to remind everyone that the U-46 Board of Education approved the resolution regarding the Elgin Math and Science Academy Charter School Initiative Proposal, 6 to 1, on April 10th of 2017. The U-46 Board of Education President was the only no vote. I've heard many oppose IMSA on basis of costs. For perspective, consider some recent expenditures and costs by U-46. Full-day kindergarten cost, $22 million. The first year of implementation with addition of, give or take, 55 FTEs. Busing, the cost of not outsourcing, at least $2 million. Approximate cost of bills approved at every board meeting, $6 million. Secondary science curriculum and curriculum resources approved April 24th, cost $3.6 million. Boiler HVAC Canton Middle School approved March 20th, 2017, cost $2.6 million. For perspective, consider IMSA's funding. Amount of funding to follow the student attending IMSA the first, next year, the first year they open, $2 million. Amount of funding to follow students attending IMSA at full capacity, $4.5 million. Compare those costs to the costs I just read to you. Those objecting to IMSA on the basis of cost cheered when full-day kindergarten was implemented and protested loudly when bus outsourcing was considered. So it seems that those who object to IMSA on the basis of cost are being a bit disingenuous. Why do they want students trapped in their zip codes? Why do they want children trapped in poverty? This is a way for funding to follow the student and give parents more control over where their children go to school. This is not U-46's money. This is taxpayer money funding education and following the student. And to quote from the Illinois Tribune Editorial Board, they said, "Remember, the tax dollars that fund U-46 do not belong to the district. Federal, state, and local funds that support student learning and teacher salaries and benefits and health care come from taxpayers. More than 200 families already have signaled an interest in registering for the random lottery that would be used to fill the seats at the charter school. Those parents are taxpayers too. Their kids deserve a chance to try a non-traditional school. If members of the school board put kids first, not political pressure, teacher unions, or scare tactics, the vote on Monday night, that's tonight, should be easy. It should be a yes," an end quote from their editorial board. I believe this charter will be approved when appealed to the Illinois Charter School Commission. Unfortunately, U-46 will lose the opportunity to have, to have this wonderful school as part of our district. And I think I've made it clear in the past that I will be voting yes."
This is quite difficult for me, and this will be the first and the last time I do this at this venue. I have never responded to any comments, and I, as I said, this will be the first and last time. I have never disparaged anyone on this board and won't ever do that at any cost. I've never disparaged a public speaker when I've been attacked. I understand that, like Melissa said, it's part of the job. I get that. But I do take offense to it. I never said anything about cutting staffs. I said it might be in order. There is a range of, that all businesses have to deal in, and that's that there is failure and there are successes. So I do take offense when someone says that I want to cut teachers or cut even the district staff. I have so much respect for the teachers I've met in my, just over two years here. I've learned so much about the district staff that I'm proud to work with, and I never fail to get more benefit out of this, my relationship with the finance and the district officials for my own purpose. And it upsets me that somehow I'm the person that wants to cut schools. I think that IMSA would be a prime example of how all of our schools should be dealt with. If they had that level of innovation and accountability, we would be a much better district. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I do not disagree with a lot of what Ms. Nolan and Ms. Ward have said, and Mr. Costello. My son has benefited from the opportunity of choice. We were able to enroll him over at Liberty in the ESL program. We had that choice. It was offered to us, we took it. I didn't have to take that. I could have kept him in his home school. And he thrived there, and I'm thankful for that choice. My concern is that what we're doing here with this contract does not mean that we are not able to have choice in the district. That is something that we can direct. That is something that we can work towards, opening up that choice in this district. We've done it at the high school level. We've done it to some degree in the elementary school level. That is something that we have control over and that we can work towards. Throwing $4 million at a, at a building to expand our operations from 57 schools to 58 schools, that's a different issue. That's what I'm voting against here in this contract. I'm not voting against choice, because I have been the benefit, I've benefited from that. You know, we've had, we've had different speakers that have come up here and talk about the building, and talk about the grounds of the Fox River Country Day School. And I, you know, I don't disagree that it's a nice building, and it's a nice piece of property, and if money were no object, it would be nice to have a school there. But we have a lot of great things happening in our buildings because of our teachers, because of the tools that we give them, because of the support that we give them. Those things that happen, the things that benefited my son because he had school choice had nothing to do with the building. It was the people inside the building that made that difference. It was the teachers that made that difference. It was his speech pathologist. It was his hearing itinerant. It was his principal. Those are the things that made the difference. Again, if this was a proposal to work on an area of pain that we have in this district, and I, there are areas of pain, there's no doubt about that. If there was a way that we could partner without spending that kind of money, opening up a building that is not owned by us, it would never be one of our assets. It is not something that our taxpayers would have any ownership of whatsoever. That's a major concern of mine. But if, you know, if we could have partnered in one of our buildings, this would have been a completely different conversation for me. And I don't want to stop the conversation of how do we do innovation in our schools? How do we offer more choice? How do we work with getting students to the services that they need? That's a, it's a, it's a different subject for me than what this contract is, and I don't want to stop that conversation. But I just want to point out that it, this is a very, for me, this is a very cut-and-dry fact that I don't feel that our district at this point, and I don't think that this is what the taxpayers want, at least that's what I'm hearing, that this expansion of operations is a, is a, is a major detriment to approving this contract.
Okay. Anyone else?
Okay, I just have a couple of things to say. I did vote no on the original resolution, and my reason was because I was very disappointed with the, with the presentation that we were given. I was on the board years ago when we did the original, looked at the original proposal, and I was very disappointed that a lot of things that we found as concerns back then were not addressed in the new proposal. As we move forward, six board members voted yes. So it was my responsibility at that time to negotiate, try to negotiate a contract and, you know, go along with the board's wishes. After listening and participating in the board conversations, IMSA's answers to our questions, and looking at the information we were given on issues that we had asked about, I cannot support this charter again. It's, it is not, to me, only the financial issues. Yes, those are important, and yes, they are concerns of mine. But I would feel the same way if we were looking at this proposal and we were being fully funded by the state. My decision would be the same. My concerns are with students, and IMSA's preparedness, and their ability to serve those students with the services needed, all within their budget. So I will not be supporting this proposal.
Any other questions? Comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. O'Neill Ellis?
No.
Ms. Kerr?
No.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
No.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Matter of precedent?
No.
So the, the motion fails, and is four against and three in favor.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda then is the Charter School Initiative Resolution to deny. So could I have a motion to approve the resolution regarding the Elgin Math and Science Academy Charter School Initiative Proposal at District U-46? Hold on a minute. I'm sorry. "School District U-46 denying the charter proposal and related draft contract based on the reasons outlined in the resolution." Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Was that Sue? Any discussion? Roll call, please. Oh, oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, we do need to, go ahead. Yeah, you're fine.
Before the board votes the resolution regarding the Elgin Math and Science Academy Charter School Initiative Proposal at District U-46 denying the charter school contract and proposal, summary is as follows. IMSA submitted a proposal for a charter school to the Board of Education on January 31st, 2017. The Board of Education convened a public meeting on March 13th, 2017, to obtain information to assist the Board in its decision to grant or deny the proposal. On April 10th, 2017, the Board of Education granted approval to the charter school proposal submitted by IMSA, subject to negotiating a mutually agreed-upon contract submitted to the Board of Education by June 30th, 2017. After at least four negotiation sessions between the administration and IMSA, with subsequent reports to the Board of Education, including reports to the Board from administration on April 24th, 2017, May 15th, 2017, June 5th, 2017, June 13th, 2017, and June 19th, 2017. During those meetings, the Board of Education provided numerous comments, suggestions, and directives to administration regarding the draft contract. This resolution hereby supersedes the Board of Education's Resolution of April 10th, 2017, regarding the conditional approval of the IMSA proposal, subject to negotiating mutually agreed-upon contract, and denies the previous conditional approval of IMSA's proposal for failure to negotiate a contract agreeable to the Board of Education. The reasons for denial include, but are not limited to, one, the contract and/or proposal do not comply with the numerous statutory requirements for charter school proposals contained in Section 7 of the charter school's law. The Board as a charter school authorizer is required to deny weak or inadequate charter applications. Two, there is no evidence of economic soundness for both the charter school and U-46. Three, enrollment is not open to all students who reside within the attendance boundaries of U-46 because of the lack of viable transportation to students who are at-risk, homeless, and/or live outside the Elgin area. Four, the proposal is not designed to serve at-risk students, homeless students, or students who reside outside of the city of Elgin's area. After considering the terms of the proposed contract and all supplemental documentation provided to the Board during negotiations, including IMSA's proposed budget, the Board of Education acknowledges concurrence with the report of the School District U-46 Charter School Evaluation Committee regarding Elgin Charter School Initiative Proposal attached to this resolution as Exhibit A. The proposed contract and proposal do not comply with the requirements of the charter school law in the following ways. One, there is no evidence of economic soundness for both the charter school and U-46. A major concern is IMSA's budget forecast submitted to the Board on June 18th, 2017, which reflects inadequate cash flow, particularly in their planning year before opening. As of June 19th, funds available to IMSA amount to $0, although IMSA was awarded a $950,000 grant, the grant works on a reimbursement basis. Although IMSA mentions that they plan on securing a line of credit for $500,000, IMSA has yet to secure it. Two, the proposal does not include a viable school site. Through its representatives, IMSA has indicated that the former Fox River Country Day School may not be secured in time to open the 2018, in the 2018-19 school year. IMSA's inadequate transportation plan will make it very difficult for many students to attend this location. There are many structural problems with the proposed facility that will result in the need for extensive and costly repairs, and IMSA has not finalized at least for the facility with the city of Elgin. Three, the goal's objectives and pupil performance to be achieved under the charter school and description of the charter school's educational program and curriculum are incomplete, are not in the best interest of students, and do not comply with the law. The proposal calls for a focus on science, and the facilities selected do not have science laboratories. The proposal does not outline how IMSA will provide education services. While administration and IMSA negotiated proposed contractual terms to address special education, those terms are financially unfavorable to the district's special education department and staff. IMSA's proposed timeline, proposed traditional bilingual education approach contradicts the district's philosophy to develop bilingual and multicultural graduates. Further, IMSA does not address plans for providing adequate assessments in Spanish. It is not clear that IMSA's design team also has a plan in place to address the needs of students in transitional living situations. And finally, student transportation needs will not be met. The proposal does not adequately address the needs of at-risk will not be met. The proposal does not adequately address the needs of at-risk, low-income, homeless students, and students who may need transportation from any of the other 10 communities served by School District U-46, including Streamwood, Hanover Park, Bartlett, Schaumburg, Wayne, Carroll Stream, South Elgin, Hoppen Estates, West Chicago, and unincorporated St. Charles, who may be able to afford their own transportation. Throughout contract negotiations, specifics on the transportation plan were not provided to district administration. Because of this, enrollment in the charter school is truly open, is truly not open to any people who resides within the geographic boundaries of the areas served by the district as required.
Thank you.
And this will be made public as soon as the vote occurs.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I, we still have time for comment here.
Yes.
I feel that this proposal, so where Mr. Sanders read it aloud and said it supersedes the previous proposal, has really been created by staff, because we did not vote on this, we did not create this. We directed administration to work with Emsa, to devote, to work on a contract, not to rehash the proposal that we already did. And I find it disingenuous that our efforts were, were not, they weren't, it was disingenuous. We did not go in good faith and negotiate if this is what happens, in that our administration has rewritten the proposal and, and rehashed all the same issues that we discussed before, and negated the 6 to 1 vote where we said, "We want you to work with Emsa and move forward and work out these contract details." We didn't go through that whole list that Mr. Sanders just went through right now. We didn't. This is disingenuous, and I strongly object to how this has been manipulated.
Number one, I think, number one, if, they cannot go to the state without a denial.
That doesn't justify rewriting the proposal.
Well, and a lot of the things in here, I think, were said by many of us, not only tonight, but last week and the week before. They were concerns of ours.
The concerns that we were negotiating for the contract. That list was an extremely long list that included things that we thought we resolved back in April. You know, we chose as a board to, to recommend moving forward. We have staff now who have rewritten the proposal and rehashed the, the same information and brought it forward tonight, and there's no other choice for us. I don't have another choice on anything else to vote on tonight. I'm being given a, a resolution that supersedes the one we already voted on. And I feel that this isn't, this just basically lets Emsa know that we did not negotiate in good faith, did we?
I disagree with that.
Yeah.
We negotiated, administration followed our direction. First of all,
Really?
Let's be, really. First of all, let's be clear. Tony Sanders and his cabinet's job is not to support Emsa?
I didn't say that.
That's not their job.
I never asked.
Their job is to vet information that comes before this board and provide their expertise and guidance. And that is what Tony and Cabinet have done. They recommended against it. We said, "Go negotiate." That is in the, and, and over the course of the negotiations, many of the things that Tony just read have come up again and again, because they either, particularly there were things I wanted in the contract that aren't in there, things that I want to change that aren't. This has been, these are not new, and they've been part of, they didn't make it to the final contract. Many of these issues have not been satisfactorily addressed in this contract, and that is why it's getting voted down.
No, if they couldn't come to an agreement, why didn't they ask for more time? Who, who makes a unilateral decision to stop and to just?
We told them that last week. That's who made this board, this board, no, no, no. This board made a decision last week that we had gone as far as we were going to go and put it in, bring the contract back. And I believe that you said, I believe you said yes. You were in agreement with that. We said, because there were many items, and if you remember, I was trying to, there were many items that, in my view, there were many items that were not satisfactory. And you, Donna mentioned it, and you agreed, you know what? I think that we, we're at the end here. If they put it in the contract, and I specifically said, you know what? You're right. Let them put it in the contract and bring the contract back, and we voted up or down. That's who decided to stop. That's who decided to stop. But yet, there's another resolution coming up here, that if you want to vote yes to extend the time to negotiate, vote yes.
You know, I would have considered that until I saw what happened this week.
Well, I don't think it was disingenuous. I don't think that anybody's trying to manipulate or trick anything. This process has been, as many have said, has been vetted. It has been vetted openly. It has been vetted transparently. And if Tony Sanders and Cabinet were jumping up and down saying, "Yes, this is the best proposal we've seen since sliced bread," you would not be intervening to try to tell them they're overstepping. The reason that you're intervening to now try to say they're overstepping when, is because it's not favorable to the position that you want, the outcome that you want. But they're doing their job. We don't hire, we hire them to advise us on matters that come before this board. And if, just as anyone would do for their bosses, say, "Listen, I know you're considering this, and there's still time. I need to weigh in and need to tell you," that, to me, is being good staff. Not, they're not overstepping their boundaries. So, and Tony and Cabinet, I appreciate what you've done in terms of advising us. I think that you did the right thing. This is not, your job is not to sit quietly and just let the ball bounce wherever it's going to. You are to direct and guide the board, guide the board in decision-making and give us your expert opinion, and I appreciate that you did your job.
This wasn't guiding. This was behind-the-scenes manipulation to make sure that this didn't pass, and here it's not passing.
I was not manipulated, so I take offense to that. There's seven people up here. You vote the way you want to vote. I vote the way I want to vote. I'm not manipulated. I disagree, just like you disagreed with all-day kindergarten, just like you disagreed with $50 million in practically interest-free bonds. And let me be clear before you jump in there, I'm not the steward of the nation's taxpayers. I'm the steward of U-46 taxpayers. That would have been a good deal for them. So I'm not manipulated. Let's be clear that my vote was not manipulated. Only seven people are voting.
That $50 million bond was never brought to the board for a vote, if you recall.
It wasn't brought because it was going to fail. That's why it wasn't brought. And then, and then you took the social media and claimed victory on it. But let's not rehash that. If you're, my vote was not manipulated here. Tony didn't manipulate anything. Cabinet didn't manipulate anything.
I never suggested that your vote was being manipulated.
No, you didn't, but she did. So I wasn't talking to you. I'm talking to Jeanette.
But I will say that the resolution was manipulated. What we were brought forth as to vote on was changed by administration, not by a vote by us. I didn't say your vote was manipulated, but I do say that what we've been presented-
Veronica, I was addressing Jeanette, who just said that this vote was, her, Tony's actions were to manipulate the vote. And I'm speaking to her comment, and I'm denying that my vote has been manipulated. I appreciate the, because Tony's job, full-time, and, and the cabinet's job, full-time, is to work and figure out what's going on here in U-46 and advise us. That's not my full-time job.
But when my boss says to me, "I heard you, and now I want you to move forward and do X," I do X. And that's not what's happened here.
Well, I'm not a yes person.
We voted in April. I'm not asking you to be a yes person. What I'm saying is that what's been rehashed is things that we already voted on. When we left here a week ago, it was a handful of items that was still to be worked out. Now, it's the laundry list of every single grievance that administration has had with the entire process, with the entire project. That's disingenuous.
Well, let me help you.
Why did we waste Emsa's time?
Let me help you out. If Tony had not read that into the record, if that wasn't, I was still voting no on the contract. Those handful, handful, I call them several, you call them handful, I'll go with several. Those handful of items, to me, were important enough, I still would be voting no on this contract. It has nothing to do, I didn't like, and I was clear in April. I don't like the location. Of course, the city of Elgin approved the lease. If I was a councilperson, I'd vote yes, too. Somebody else is going to fix up, U-46 is going to pay to fix up my dilapidated building, and I still own the asset? Heck, yeah, that's a deal for the city. But I'm not a city councilperson. I'm a U-46 school board member. I didn't like that, I didn't like the proposal. I voted yes to give them an opportunity to get to a decent contract. In my opinion, and my vote, that didn't happen. Tony didn't manipulate that. He did his job. Just like with my boss, he can keep saying, "Hey, this is what I want done," and all along, until it's done, I will advise him if I think differently. And I expect that from Tony and Cabinet. And that's what I got, and I'm happy with it.
Any other comments?
I think, and I said it earlier, but I just want to say it again. This kind of stuff, supporters of Emsa, those of you who are putting Emsa together, they're great ideas, and you're people who have children and don't feel that your local schools are acceptable places for your children to learn, and I understand and I accept that. But I think that the first step isn't to open up another school. It's to take what we have and to go to, you know, your various parent-teacher organizations, and to try and take all those ideas that you have, because they're great ideas, and implement them in our schools. And those schools that you feel are unacceptable for your children, make those schools better so that not just a handful of students, but all the students that are at that school can benefit from ideas that could help just a handful of students move on, get higher test scores. It could help the entire school.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
No.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
No.
Mr. Costello?
No.
Ms. O'Neal Ellis?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approved for three.
Okay. With that resolution approved, we will not be voting on the last resolution. That being the last item on the agenda, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Sue, was that Sue? And Tracy? Roll call, please.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
We adjourn.
Thank you.